Good evening, welcome to the November 28th Select Board Meeting for the Town of Barrington. All the voter go call attendance, it's in here.
Keviel.
Man Shrek here, Mr. Scotia said he would not be attending.
Or maybe virtual.
Oh, he is virtual. Maybe, okay. Good I ask you all to join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Britain, standing as one nation, under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gender review and approval. Someone like the agenda has written.
The issues here.
motion to approve. Sorry, all those in favor?
I'm.
Very good. This has passed, public comment. Very briefly, if anyone here or online or on the telephone has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. I always like read this just to learn, working from the same, same ways that I can find a thing to read at times. Okay, Mr. Should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on a matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, select board and or the town administrator. Will preserve strict order and decorum at meetings. Anyone here who'd like to speak, make public comment? For those of you online, if you would raise your hand, push the raise your hand thing on the teams. And those of you on the telephone, it's a star six.
Right.
And wait to be recognized and take yourself off mute will allow you to speak. Don't see any hands up.
Nor do I.
Anything on telephone.
I don't see anything.
About ten, twenty more seconds, excuse me. Not seeing anything from online or on telephone or any persons who know in the public first public comment, there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the, toward the end of the meeting. Public hearing, school board liaisons, I don't see anyone here from the school board, not much to report specifically, except they had a, a workshop and I'm not sure what the results have been for. To be still. Fire in the MF cemetery budget presentation. Walter, come join us.
And whether now or, or after, we have, we have some fresh baked cookies.
I did them myself.
I'm second, after reconsideration, maybe not, okay.
What do you want to start with?
So this is section eighteen of the budget binder. It was reviewed by the advisory budget committee meeting last Tuesday and you have a copy of their minutes in your packet. That's much.
You'll see I presented my budget, six new firefighters, a new fire station and three new fire trucks, but in the interest of compromise, if you guys just give me my budget, I'll get rid of all the rest of the other stuff.
I heard yeses, that's what I heard.
I'm only gonna.
Yeah, we're off the load, you went to me.
I'm only gonna talk hit the increased pieces, if there's anything you want me to, you want to discuss specifically, just start me. The fire chief salary, there was an increase and that's based on cost of living and step increase should you approve it. You'll see a thirty-seven percent increase in the full-time hourly, that represents the, a full year for the hiring of the fourth full-time firefighter. Hour we showed a modest increase and that's primarily to cover any potential pay raises that may come out of the budget process. Responder points, we dropped thirteen percent and that was just looking at what we've been spending in the responder points over the last three years and felt that was reasonable. Overtime, you'll see a thirty-six percent increase for four thousand dollars. Primarily, the, the increase for that was based on was the folks swapping over to a twenty-four hour shift. You know, if I have to put a full-timer in on an overtime to cover one of the twenty-four shifts, it's close to a thousand dollars, so obviously, what I try to do is either fill a twelve-hour shift with a pot timer or both shifts with a pot timer and save the overtime, but when I can't do that, so I just kind of looked at the numbers, that's in reality, it's, it's still the data for making this question.
How can I go now? At the end of the day, just ask questions, no.
Okay, Chief, is that gonna be enough for you, do you think?
We hope so.
Because for the increase in population that we participated of the CPI, so I was just wondering how that's gonna work hand in hand with.
I'm hoping so, but the, the way that I typically use that my budget, I mean, big expenses I do at the end of the year, so if we had a problem that it's allowing force us to override overrun that budget, I would have areas that I would, I would just not do what I had to do to make sure that I stay within budgets.
Thank you. Please.
Employee benefits show a thirty-seven percent increase, that's primarily because of adding the fourth person. And I'll be the first to tell you that if you have any questions on that line, that's somebody other than myself will have to explain that because you're gonna see that under the contract line, we're, we're in discussion with UNH dispatch right now, expect to have a number sometime this month, but we, the board goes to exercise a three-year contract with UNH dispatch. Three years ago, we just entered, we're in our last year of it, so they're looking at, looking at putting another three-year contract together with the idea that if we can do a three-year contract, it's a cost savings to the community that they service. I expect around this ten percent increase, so that would, that would equate for us around a thousand dollars, but I don't have a number right now, so we'll, hopefully, we'll have that number within the next couple of weeks before we finally put the budget together.
Do they do a longer contract?
I actually, I actually spoke to them about a five-year contract and they didn't say no, so I asked them if they would consider putting numbers together for a three and a five-year contract or the four communities that they serve, Barrington, Lee, Madburg and Gregory MS might look at long-term savings.
I don't know who's gonna answer this, but do you think we'll answer this before we make presentations to the public?
Yes, yes, one way or the other, or if not, then I'll, I'll live within what I have for budget.
Thank you.
The other thing that you'll see, the CCO's chiefs can we have mutual aid association of the town, although we're above fifty members strong, we operate on about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your budget. And a lot of our dues and assessment fees have been relatively low because they've been able to use grant funding to offset some of this. Grant funding is drying up, the board directors made the decision that it's not reasonable to put budgets together based on the fact that we're gonna get a grant, so they came up with a three-year plan that is gonna show about a thousand about a thousand dollar increase in the, in the, in our dues to that association over the next three years, so we want increases, but just so they know that they're coming. We have a line on vehicle maintenance, I'm still comfortable that I'm gonna be okay with that. Our lead engine, I gotta put tires on that this fall, I gotta do a brake job on it, but money if not, I'll do that the first of the year, but it's just, all in all, I think with the new tanker and relatively maintenance-free vehicle, I, I'm still comfortably, little cost increases have gone up, we had to put rear springs on engine one, so we take the sticker this year. That, that was a three thousand dollar expense that wasn't budgeted for, we didn't think we were gonna put springs on, so, but Conferences and training, there's a thousand dollar increase in that, mainly with past COVID, now this class of the stock data, and so I add a little money to make sure that if there's people that want to go to classes, I need those classes, I'm not gonna say that. The operating supply line, I added a modest five hundred dollars, and again, that's just more or less, we're not buying as much of the money we had. Stuff goes out, so trying to keep up with it. And there's a modest, there's an eight percent increase in the equipment line. And you can see that we're looking to purchase some pages and hope, and we have to start replacing SCA models. They go out hydro after fifteen years, so we're at a spot now, they're both six or seven years old, so we started replacing a few years, so that by the time they don't want these that we have in place now, go out of hydro, we're all gonna have to replace forty-five year models. But what I'm telling that's it, I think you see in my narrative that the majority of this increase is primarily based on funding.
Questions, sir?
Yes, I do, Chief, I appreciate it, it's a good budget, I like it, you know, but protective gear, I don't see any additions on there. What are you gonna do if, you know, something gets destroyed or to a point where you can't use it, how, what do you have to fall back on?
So, so.
Right now, because the reason I say that, you got about three hundred dollars left, and that's why I'm asking, so.
So that, we budgeted for about five cents a year, and again, if you know, you, I think you're on the board, a number of years ago, we went to an emergency in which we gather some vegetable oil, a gentleman would use it in make biodiesel and the gear couldn't be cleaned, so we lost a, a, a six or seven cents a year. And so we replaced them because we had to, and at the end of the year, the town had a little bit of surplus funds, so the boards very graciously agreed to allow us to buy five cents a year that we would replace that year. So the short answer to that question is again, the way that I typically, I don't typically spend my equipment line till, till near the end of the year, and that's the reason for it, that if we had to replace gear rather than I pride myself in not having to come to the board and saying, hey, I spent all my money, but now I have to fix it, so I can have some money, so you know, I pride myself and we get to this time of year, we look and say, hey, we're three or four weeks and the budget's gonna be done, so we're, we're gonna spend the money the way we intended, but if we get jammed up and have to replace gear, then we'll do everything we can to do it within our budget, and I can assure you that if I come to the five, you can say I need money, then it's because I've tried everything I could do within my means to.
Thank you.
I also have questions about.
I just want to bring to your attention the truck replacement schedule baby got tonight, I tried to pull a quick one on the town.
He got you.
I was off on my numbers, and he, so we caught, so that's why you're looking at, really all, the only thing that's changed is as it says, capital during twenty twenty-two. That four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars is as of today. The jump line, so that's real life, you have to revise paper for that.
Yes, sir.
My name is, you handed out, what's the Smeele pump?
Yeah, that, the two thousand one Smeele pump is the manufacturer that made that truck. Much like we would call it Ford, which can be, that's a custom made by Smeele.
That's the one you specifically want?
Yes.
Someone's been there for the dirt. I brought the taste probably on it.
Okay. Good questions. Chief.
I just mentioned cemetery, or is that the data?
Yeah, definitely. So, the cemetery is a, is a level funded budget, it's really little. The only thing that I might mention in that is some of the projects we intended to do this year didn't get done because yeah, we buried somebody in a spot that belonged to somebody else already. So I tried to get them to just become friendly enough that it would be okay for them to stay there, but that didn't work, so we ended up spending money to have a body removed and put in the, in the proper location. So that was certainly an unanticipated expense and because we run our budget really tight and don't, if we have a lot of extra money, just put projects aside and we.
Run the cross frame.
Yep. I will say that I'm pretty comfortable that the issue's been taken care of, I can't say enough about how diligent a job that Crystal does in. She did an audit of all the books, God bless her, she found a couple errors that we were able to correct and then about the time they moved into this building and she thought she was all set, she told me one day that they found a pile with about twenty-five or thirty more buried, that grave lots in it, so she, when she thought she was done, she really, but she does a great job and I do not anticipate that we would want to do it again.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't touch.
Yeah. Kevin up with that on.
I think she'll be joining us, she was getting some work done in her office until we got to that point.
Okay.
But I can start with an introduction, if you're ready for that. So the capital improvements program is a statutory requirement for the town, any town that has a zoning ordinance has to have a capital improvements program. And the capital improvements program is the planning board's document, Vanessa, you, we're, we're ready, yeah. Yeah, no, you're no problem, I was just starting with a little introduction. So the CIP is the, the planning board's document, and the last time we had a robust capital improvements program updated was in two thousand nineteen. It was one of the projects that took a back burner while we had intermittent service in the planning department, and so when Vanessa joined us earlier this year, we started talking early about the importance of a robust update to the capital improvements program, getting in a, a schedule where this is a document that's updated every year. So the select board's role in this is to review and comment on what the planning board has put together. And once adopted by the planning board, the idea is that the select board is using this as a guiding document, no different than the input you all take from the budget committee during a, a review of each year's budget process. This CIP is a recommendation for the select board to consider in making policy decisions about the budget, about Warren articles, about capital, about prioritizing capital expenditures, and so that's the super high-level purpose and, and the reason we're here is that for the select board to offer comment on this document. And I'll let Vanessa explain to you a little bit about what process she went through with the planning board and departments to get here.
Thank you for listening to me this evening, I started this probably about the summertime, there was kind of a big overhaul and it would first did a number of requests to meet with all the department heads as well as the school board and start to compile the list of projects that they're looking for, their capital projects. For short-term capital improvement for the next six years, that begins in twenty twenty-three, midterm improvements to be seven to ten years in future, need a long-term project after that. So going through this process, it was great to get to know everybody and there's a lot of, a few of the department heads have gone through this as well, it was their first time. So that was the highway department, that was Mark and then Aaron with the transfer station, with Rick, recreation, the library, school of work, conservation commission, Don, he's writing a tour, you know, he's just a little bit in it, the conservation commission, and then of course, art department. I think I've captured everybody, so it was a long process of to gather the information, they each filled out worksheets to justify their projects, it wasn't just, this is what I like. I mean, it is kind of like a wish list, but a lot of things are, I should probably say I've already been through the budget process. Like vehicle replacement, like we know, like we're just talking about that, Mark had put one together, which he had not put one together before, so we were working process and that. The great thing about that it's gonna be done every year is that we can always like update with new information or things that may have been missed this round, you know, things that we want to add to it, maybe like DOT projects, that sort of thing. So after I met with all the department heads, to compile all the information together to do a report, as you see, and then spreadsheet, spreadsheet, I feel like it took more time, because that was more shows what everybody's goals were in doing this, it's a short-term, both in the bottom, you'll see that's where those lot of the projects come from, but also things that we should be looking for in the future, projects. And after being called then met with the planning board, the meeting was last the big seat, I believe, was our work session, I'm just kidding, they went through all of their projects, their ranks, and with the ranking that you see there might be slightly different, that the ranking that was rocks, the planning board, that's the rank, the initial ranking comes from all the department heads, so they decide what is, what's their priority. And as the planning board, they take those suggestions and they or may not agree with them, that's part of the planning board, something they go with it. Go through all the projects, and then we bring it to you tonight to show what the planning board is going through, and see if there's any other questions or anything you can answer. Or can tell you what we worked on the most or the least or.
Please. Vanessa, how are you today?
Good, how are you, sir?
The, I do have a few comments, and the first one starts on page four. Page four, on the impact phase and what have you, and my only comment is too, I didn't see anything in the comments here about using a sunset rule or anything else like that, just recommendation, you might consider finding a way to insert that on board with the planning. Appreciate that, the next one's on page eight. And we're talking about a lot, natural resource and everything else, we're about to price that in anything else. Now, being a ex-conservation member and what have you, I do know that some of the trust that we wrote in St. Back did have comments in about parking and about trails and what have you, need completed within, some say one year, some say two years, and some of that's the continuation which was granted, and so that's, I don't see anything in there that talks about that, so they go through some of the ones that are there, especially the ones, I don't even know, but I don't stand waiting to have one, but there are some of those that, that will explain themselves and make it a little bit easier because that's part of the trust. Now, it's folks who spent a lot of money on doing that, lots of basic people have done an excellent job of doing it.
Mr. Bailey, if I could summarize, are you suggesting that Vanessa bring back to the planning board the suggestion that there be a conservation commission item for development of parking?
I'm just bringing these as select board member, some of the items that I find they're, they're okay, but I think I need, they, some of them might need attention to it, that's what I'm getting at, I'm not here to criticize this today.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Just give some of the stuff that.
Well, but your role is to send Vanessa back to the planning board with comments for them to, to take under consideration, and is that one you'd like her to take back?
Yes, well, I appreciate that. Then we go to page nine. Yeah. Second paragraph there, I have a, another comment on page nine, nine is to review the conservation achievements are already written, that might take care of some of these here. And then we go to the recreation, and not that I needed or anything, I don't see anything in their programs for the elderly. I do know that at one time they tried to set up bus services to different events or what have you, and it was, it took a murderous loss, so I don't know how that's gonna work again, a little advertised or anything else, but I do know they tried it. It did work, but I'd like to see it, see it again to help out on that one. And we're gonna get back to my favorite subject from Kim, where we start talking about place departments or FTEs, that's how I feel, there was an accident the other day at night, and a hundred police officers were on scene and they don't know if they did have patrols or anything else, able to answer other, other calls and that, that's one of the reasons why I say for safety functions of the town. Over the highway, it's watching again, I saw, I went through this thing and I'm glad to see we're there for more equipment, that's something I'm very, very glad to see is written into that. And that is the end of my comments, and I thank you very much, it's, it's a, it's a good project, I like that, it's a good project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Under the conservation, was this the ranking that we're. So what you see before you tonight is the ranking that came out from the planning board meeting, the ranking did it slightly different from before, the number one project still stayed as the Richard Fornina. However, there was a lot of discussion about where the funding should come from, I was talking with the not really the parts, but the chair of the conservation commission, there was a few individuals and there was for a large portion of the funding for their blog, it's got from the planning board, they felt like it was responsibility of the conservation commission to pay for it, so I staff, I take those in consideration. This was a consensus of the planning board to make those changes, the other change was just in ranking, so to prepare, as you see here, I prepared a force management plan. That was ranked number two, and then after that, that fell behind it, which is. That was ranked number two and then after you know, that fell behind it, which is rings. A step lower than I were originally. Yeah, I just see the priority of development rights is number six and I wonder how well they can predict that. Maybe we just discussed the latent property. And I don't know that they know when those kinds of properties will. That's true. So once again, this is kind of like a, within the next six years. So at least speaking from the conservation commission, they originally had Richard's event, like a comprehensive conservation management plan. They wanted to work that within the next couple of years to get that done. So like every year, maybe not every year, I mean, I know we're going to be doing this every year, but maybe every other year we'll see a shift in projects as they get completed or maybe with the priorities more. So they know that there's always, they always see that there's a purchase of development rights. Like I said, they don't know when property is going to come available. I know they do have funding set aside for it, maybe not as much as they need. But it was a priority of the, the chair and then conservation commission.
And if I could add to that, the, what I have heard from the conservation commission is specific to the conservation fund, that they try to reserve money in the conservation fund for when those opportunities come available to purchase development rights. And because they don't always know, and there have been some situations recently where they would have been interested in contributing more towards a project, but they didn't have availability in the fund. One specific that comes to mind is the Leighton Forest. The conservation commission made a, a small contribution to the project. But if the, their circumstances, their financial circumstances had been different, I think they would have been interested in being a lot more involved in purchasing part of the conservation easement, because most of that project is in Barrington. But I think, so, yes, yeah, they have a variety of funding sources, obviously, as, as they typically do. The, but I think the two dovetail quite a bit, the Richardson Pond Dam and funding source and development rights. And so for the select board, this is, this conversation will continue tomorrow. The budget committee is talking about all of the Warren articles and making recommendations on which ones to reduce, how to prioritize the Warren articles. And I expect that they will have a fair amount of conversation about the Richardson Pond Dam. Excuse me, Warren article as well. So the select board should be prepared at the meeting on the fifth or the meeting on the 12th to reconcile the recommendations from the planning board and the budget committee and decide how to move forward with that project.
Are you in cemetery site? Are they, where are they looking to?
We're working right on that, so I'm sure.
I'm just curious if they're trying to expand whatever different locations.
We, we got a cemetery trustee right here. We'll get that question answered.
We just, we look at replay, there's some property that we look at, that we're looking at, that puts the current cemetery behind the turf that we'd like to get our hands on. The owner doesn't want to sell it at this point, but it really has no value to anybody but us. It's kind of broken off by a swamp. So we're kind of hoping that he's willing to do that, but long term, I don't believe the town has to purchase any land for cemetery purposes necessarily in the next 10 to 15 years. But as the town grows, town has the obligation to provide a place for residents. So we, the town always needs to be looking at where are we going to go with this, so.
Yeah. The other cemeteries we have, we allow, I don't know what the law is on it. We allowed to ask them if someone wants to bury somebody inside of theirs, so strictly for that particular family. If they.
So private burial grounds belong to the heirs of the people that are interred there. We have no ability to enter anybody there and anybody that wants to go into private burial ground would have to get permission from the heirs that are there.
Thank you.
Thanks Vanessa.
Well, just a good second here.
Okay, very good. All those in favor?
Thank you. Yes, so we have one application, Matt Mowers from, for the Recreation Commission. He is, has a background in recreations, recreational professional and is interested in joining the Recreation Commission as an alternate. The Recreation Commission reviewed his application. They're interested in having him join their group. And what you don't see in the narrative here is there's one member of the Recreation Commission that once his term expires in March, he's interested in reverting back to an alternate. And at that time, it's likely that you'll see Matt be brought forward as a full member of the Recreation Commission. But he'd like to serve as an alternate between now and then.
Do they have any questions we'd like to ask you? As per our policy, we will consider for vote at our next meeting.
Vote to it?
I have enough this one. Thank you. Stanford Board, MacGyver.
Uh, thank you. So we've read the November work anniversaries a few times. And so we'll move on, ask the town. I included another roundup of the questions that we were asked in that, what would be the second week. A few of the, a few of the highlights. So answers about the midterm election, there's a couple of questions there. As you know, the results for Barrington were recounted. And, and so some information about what a recount is and how, how it's called for, et cetera. I think of particular interest with the details of that is that the results in Barrington were just single digit votes different than the results from election night with forty seven somehow, some odd thousand or forty seven hundred some odd votes. And if you start to look at the recount results from the other communities, the other districts that have had recounts, the numbers are kind of startling how different the results are in a recount. And they accept a margin of error in, in a recount. But the results in Barrington were extremely accurate, which I think is a testament to the folks that we have running the election and the staff we have working the polls. So a question about the Barrington flag, which we intend to get one hanging up in here. Question about Malago Road and more questions about signs. So again, we encourage anybody that has questions to use this method as a way to have your question answered and allow us to share the details of your question and answer with others who likely have the same question. So keep the questions coming. The NHMA conference was earlier this month, a few staff members and others participated, including the select board chair. I included a list of some of the sessions we were able to attend, we being myself, Tiffany and Danin. So that if you did have any questions about topics covered, we're happy to discuss them. But I'll, I'll say I certainly learned a lot. And it gave the chair and I some talking points over lunch at the conference as well. So it's time well spent.
Any questions? Good solution. I've been on the like to vote. Red and highway, probably about four session.
There were.
Electricity and other on land use. The energy nation. Covering a lot of that already and as far as the housing.
Is there any way that we could get some of that information for the land use and other copy of the curriculum, something to take a review?
We did. Yep. So we sent, I sent the materials from the energy session to the energy committee members. And I know Vanessa participated in the land use sessions as well.
It's good.
Okay, so an update about the community project funds grant that we were awarded in the federal budget. So for the board members that have been here a little while, and certainly for Joyce and Rob, you remember talking about this in, you know, even as far back as February and March of this year. The administration, the federal administration of the community project funds has been breathtakingly slow. They, they haven't done the community project funds in a couple of decades. And so at an administrative level, they have had a lot of delays in processing the grants and the grant agreements. So for example, the budget passed in March. It wasn't until July that we received the invitation letter about the award letter for our grant. And they requested information, which I sent back the same day. And we still haven't even seen a grant agreement yet. And they're just working through dotting all of their i's and crossing all their t's.
Keep you awake.
Yes, unfortunately, it's, it's. So I, when Congressman Pappas called me to tell me that the budget had passed and the money was included. I used that opportunity to, to tell him, hey, you know, I've asked a lot of questions through this process and nobody's really had information. And that kind of gives me concern. And what he told me is he said, what I can tell you is that the federal budget says that the town of Barrington is going to get 1.5 million dollars. And that's the plain text of the federal budget. So the town of Barrington is going to get 1.5 million dollars. So, okay, that's just, let's just trust you. I was on a call last week with a lot of heavy hitters in DC, in HUD and in the appropriations committee. And I felt like it was the most unproductive 45 minutes I had spent doing anything government related. And when I talked to Congressman Pappas's after, office afterwards, he said it was one of the most productive meetings he's had in a long time. And so I think it's just, I, I am especially frustrated by red tape. Anyways, brass tacks, what that means for us is we're going to have to execute on the bond authority that we had, which the select board already authorized back in February when we were still uncertain, although we were hoping to ride it out. So that we can close up our books. It's essentially a grant anticipation loan. And so we intend to move forward on that. The next step for the select board is the closing will happen at a public session. And so maybe that will be December 12th uncertain. We're still trying to line everything up. And I'll continue to work with Congressman Pappas's staff, HUD and the appropriations committee to get through the process as fast as humanly possible.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is with a private bank, not with the bank, not with the state bound. So there is no prepayment.
Right.
So essentially there's no cost to the town. A little, there's several ways.
The unfortunate, the unfortunate part of it is we'll pay bond council, which is about $8,000. And the, the time between when the bond is executed and the grant is received, interest will accrue and we'll pay that. And so with, you know, it will still be worthwhile for 1.5 million dollars. But it's, I expressed without reservation, my frustration on the fact that it's costing the town money to secure this grant. That, that the, the biggest irony is it's, they called for projects in March of 2021. And that this project needed to be shovel ready. They needed to get these projects done and spend within the, you know, budget appropriation schedule and all the rest. And here it is almost the end of 2022 and they don't even have grant agreements yet. So it's, it's been frustrating and it will cost us a little bit of money. And so hopefully the, when, when it will all be worth it, but it's been a painful process a little bit.
The federal government grinds slowly but exceedingly fine.
They do, they do grind fine. I tell you that they grind fine. Yes, indeed. Ms. Bailey.
Question. So as we know, the election results are, I believe, finally finalized. And suppose we're still sitting around here January 15th. Is there any way that this can be removed from us?
I'm not sure your question, but.
Okay, my question is.
I would go back to.
Can they turn around the new Congress that starts in January? Can they go back and take this away from us?
No. So going back to the conversation I had with Congressman Pappas, the budget passed and says that the town will be awarded 1.5 million dollars. And it's just a matter of going through that process, which is taking administratively, taking housing, housing and urban development a lot of time.
Yeah, they basically have to make honor rules. They haven't made rules for 10 years or so.
Yeah, two decades. It's been over two decades that they've done this process, so.
Well, I'm grateful for the money, but I just hope that we can get that taken care of, so there'll be less money on the taxpayers.
I completely agree. I completely agree.
At least we're still going to be able to have it.
Yes. So the master plan community meeting. So we were very glad to receive over 600 responses to the survey that the master plan steering committee put together. So they collected a lot of really valuable data for the steering committee to review. And this is the second phase of that survey process is this community meeting where all residents are encouraged to come, meet with the committee in work sessions to review the results and really take it a step further than just data points from a survey. So that community meeting is December 10th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM and will be at the ECLC in the multipurpose room. And so anybody that is available and interested is encouraged to attend.
Review some of those questions or do we just for our information, are we going to have any information from that before we go there? Or we just go there and listen to what's being presented, the questions they ask?
So there's a, there'll be a professional facilitator with each group. My understanding will be there before groups, folks will rotate throughout. And they'll probe the participants to gain additional input based on the results that were received. That's my understanding. Is that yours as well?
Yeah, I haven't seen any data.
I, I think it's, yeah, I think the data, the, the data is, is being refined at the community meeting. So they don't just do the survey and then say, this was the survey results. They do the survey with the community meeting and then put a report together of what they heard collectively. You and me both. Okay, thank you.
The only thing I have for you is if you all don't mind, could you please sign the Sanders search contract, the title search contract for the tax collector before you leave tonight?
All right. Old business, Tiff district.
Yes, time for the meat and potatoes of tonight's meeting. So I know you all have read the information included in your packet, but I just want to hit a couple of highlights. First being on the town's website, barrington.nh.gov forward slash Tiff, T I F. I have created, and I'll share it here. Get it up on the screen. A landing page which shows the the important details of a Tiff district and more specifically the Tiff district that we're proposing to residents this March. And so you'll find the background, all of the different surveys and sessions that the town has done that have described what we want for a town center. The background of adopting the Tiff district authority in 1988. The specific Tiff district details, which we'll be talking about these maps in just a minute. Some just quick facts about how the Tiff district is mutually beneficial. And then a long listing of frequently asked questions with a lot of links to backup information. And then a long listing of frequently asked questions with a lot of links to backup information and additional details. And so I would encourage anybody who has questions to, to check out this webpage. At the bottom, I have more questions, my direct contact information. So we can add to the frequently asked questions and get the information out there. Again, this isn't a, a simple concept. And so it will be very important that we allow residents to become informed on what this means. So that when they're faced with a question in the ballot box, they understand what their decision means. So that they can vote accordingly. So that's the webpage. So the goals for tonight, my goals for tonight are to finalize the map. And to finalize the items the select board want to include in the development program. So without objection, we'll start with the map. Okay. So worked with Stratford Regional Planning. To. Bring the proposed map or the proposed parcels, parcels onto a map. And I also printed a copy. And so this is, right now, this is what is being proposed as the town center Tiff district. A couple of things to keep in mind, the statute gives two restrictions. There's a restriction on land area as a fraction of the total community and a restriction on assessed value as a fraction of the total assessed value. So this district as proposed, the data is on that webpage. Is 3.9% of the total land area, we're allowed up to five. And I think it's a little over 5% of the assessed value, we're allowed up to eight. And so we, we have room to grow, which Tiff districts often do grow. As development happens and we start to see the trend move in a different direction. That's, that's what you often see in communities. So obviously our town center and our village zoning districts are, were the, the baseline for this review. And we left out some property from specifically from the village district, which is either already developed. Like Deer Ridge and Village Place and these large conservation parcels. Or the conservation parcels associated with this subdivision that's going on behind us. Turbo Cam and the conservation property adjacent to Turbo Cam. Purely residential property, which at this point seems unlikely to be redeveloped in a commercial way. This is along Malago and Stone Farm Rogers Run. So these holes that you see and what would otherwise make this a continuous map of the town center and village district. Were on purpose parcel by parcel. So we reviewed this map with a lot of stakeholders, staff. We had a meeting with some business owners from the town center that own undeveloped land. And sought input from the planning board and others. So this is the map as it's proposed. I'll talk a little bit about the extents and then seek any questions. So out this way, we're at this lot right here. So the biggest idea of, of growing this direction. Is that Barrington zoning is set up to consolidate development, commercial development along Route 125. And so we have commercial properties, quite a few which are undeveloped, which have development potential. Additionally, we have the privately owned railroad bed, which is right here. Which there's have, has historically been a lot of talk about trying to develop into some sort of rail trail or recreation opportunity in the future. So including that as part of this gives us flexibility to establish a funding source to take on a project like that. So out this way, this is pretty easy. This is the middle school, th- these are the apartments going up across from the middle school. And then this is a lot of undeveloped property in the town center and village zoning districts behind where the Irving is. Down this direction, it takes us down to our Commerce Way here, which will, I think, for a long time, continue to see development and redevelopment of commercial property. We've obviously. It's called Commerce Way on Purpose. And then there's undeveloped property across from that part of what is currently a Santa gravel pit. Which will likely see commercial development in the future. And then out this direction, so this is kind of the longest tail. But this brings us out to the geographic center of town where we have the rec library building and then the recreation space here. Where the playground and field is. On the way out there, we're able to pick up this six acre lot at the end of Redemption Road. That is behind Turbo Cam, which has been earmarked for recreational development at some point in the future. We also pick up these undeveloped lots. One of which Turbo Cam is actively developing. And then the public safety building lot is here. Out this direction, we have another pit which will expire at some point and some undeveloped property. So happy to answer questions about the map again with the goal that the select board will approve. A version of the map tonight so we can move on to the next steps of the process. Please.
I wish they used a different color than purple and we could see the underlying. Information behind it.
Noted.
You can't read, you can't read dogs on it.
Would you like to make a motion to change the color of the map?
I just wanted to see if we could read what's behind it.
Understood, yes, we do have four versions of the map available on the town's website. That you can zoom in and hopefully decipher the information you're looking for.
My kind of little exercise, please, so. I hope you take.
Please.
So the planning board is proposing two zoning ordinance. I assume these lots are in the purple, those lots 64 and 65, which are on Balfour Road and to make those commercial.
That's out here, yes.
So those would be included in the purple?
Yes.
And then 10 lots on Oak Hill Road?
Yes. Yep, and I'll talk about those two specifically. So we talked about this, the town consolidating commercial, the zoning for commercial development on Route 125. So the regional commercial zoning district was essentially drawn to pick up any lots within 500 feet on either side of Route 125. Which was great, that's a perfect way to consolidate development. The problem was it, it left a few lots out, which, which should have been included. And down here is a perfect example. So this pit, you, it is, it is commonplace at, at some point in the future to see pits developed. Into commercial property, sometimes residential property like this one. But it, developing a gravel pit lays the perfect groundwork for additional development of some sort. The, the next best use for the value of the property. Anyways, this, these lots were beyond 500 feet from 125. So these are in a residential district. The trouble is there's a lot of commercial development potential here. And if they were zoned accordingly, then the, we would be more likely to see the type of commercial development and expansion of the commercial tax base. Then we would be if they were strictly general residential. So that's those ones up here is actually the opposite story. So I believe that these lots here are in the town center zoning district. And the trouble is that requires commercial development on the first floor. And what we've heard from property owners and developers is there's no reason to have commercial development here. It's off a residential road, Oak Hill Road, there's no exposure to 125 or Route 9. And so if we could, we being developers, if we could develop the, the land back here residentially. That would allow us to develop more dense commercial development in the town center, which is how the town center zoning district is established. And so both of those are included because there's development potential. But that's the changes being proposed by the planning board.
Are you going to put a warrant article for that?
Yes.
So yes, I understand one of these failed in 2018.
Yeah.
The 10 lot.
Other questions about the map?
The homestead, I, I realize that's not on there. Was there any reason to put that on? Is there enough development there to create some?
Maybe. So the reason, even closer than that would be the 150 acres behind Liberty Truck, that Hard Rock development. And I felt, I felt like it was important and, and the intent of the establishing Tiff districts. Is that the, there is some geographic bounds to the district. It's actually not a requirement that it be contiguous. So you could pick up like this lot here and have a part of this district. But it's, it's generally best practice to keep it contiguous and in a geographic area. And so the homestead, Barrington's 48 square miles, so the homestead's very far that way. And even the Hard Rock development is, is very far that direction. But I think like we already talked about, about around the lake or especially with that potential commercial industrial park down behind Hard Rock. These things take time and we would have time to establish an additional Tiff district. If, if opportunities arose.
I think they're two just either set up a new Tiff, separate Tiff district, or we can modify the Tiff district.
Yes.
It's a geographic maximum or the total, total Tiff districts or just each individual district?
So interestingly, there's no limit to how many Tiff districts you can have. And the, there, your whole town would be part of a Tiff, 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 excuse me, a Tiff district, assuming they're all different. What there is a limit to is how much total debt can be incurred within Tiff districts. And so. I'm kind of shooting from the hip, but the total land area limit is 5%. But you can't create a new Tiff district if you have outstanding debt in more than 10% of your community within Tiff districts. They kind of put limits on it that way, but. Please.
What, what does this board have to do to bring the Rick? In, in on this with us?
They're in on it with you. Yeah, in your.
What I'm saying is because we appoint them to be here and there might be some money on, on the board that has. An idea or something that I don't have any. But I mean, just so that they could use that. Would they become the owner of the property or the town still be the owner of the property with the wreck working on it?
So those, yes, so all of those topics on specific development opportunities would need to be worked out between the select board. And whomever may be involved in a development project. Specific to the recreation's involvement, they spent almost an entire meeting reviewing their strategic plan. And the, the Tiff information they provided to the director. And put together a comprehensive list of items to be included in the development program, which you see in your report. So the question about, you know, ownership or responsibility and maintenance and operation, all of those items would need to be decided as development. You know, government development takes place. And would certainly, you know, it would be reasonable to assume that it would follow a similar model of what we have now. Where, you know, the recreation department is responsible for the playground, for example. But I think what would also be reasonable to expect is if we are developing, say, courts in the town center. And we are using Tiff funds to develop those and putting the recreation department in charge of or responsible for those. That we maintain funding within the Tiff model for the maintenance or even staffing necessary to properly take care of those facilities, whatever they may be.
Yeah, because brought, brought that to my attention as I asked that question is that when you go down nine, you can see that. There seems to be a lot of cars in those new development. Units that are there and the lights are on and it's a lot of houses up in back here. I took a ride the other day and I was amazed that the foundations were there, but then the other ones were for sale. And we had what, two for sale, sold signs. It's amazing the students is available. And that's why I was just hoping we could have the right cell done this.
Okay.
All these, all these properties can be privately owned. And then in fact, that's what the taxing increment is, is for. We're talking about town owned properties and that's different.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but still providing the recreation because the population is increasing and everything else and we still have places to go. It'll work out, it'll be a wonderful thing to have for everybody.
My only concern with the rep department is how we're going to connect to their tails. As in B6.
I did you not, didn't I call out a tail? I said the longest tail that we have goes out to the recreation property. I saw a hire you as a proofreader. We'll get that corrected for the development program. Okay, to the map, adjustments to the map. Okay.
No, it's sort of guessing.
You got a guess for the.
A lot of criticism of the color.
That's what.
To tell Jackson.
Yeah, I can see the real.
I've lost several times.
But I see it does.
Yeah.
But probably more importantly, if we agree on the general outline of the map, the next part is probably establish some sort of priorities. Do that two separate, make a motion first.
Perfect, please, go ahead.
George.
Okay, let's do it by real calls.
Yeah, the other line.
Okay, so now the development program. Now again, the statutory requirement is that we make a development program and a finance plan for a Tiff district. And the importance of a finance plan is generally because Tiff districts bond money, borrow money upfront. We're not proposing to borrow any money. And so the finance plan is pretty simple. The finance plan says when you have money available, spend it on the development program. And the development program is, is the what of a Tiff district. What we're actually planning to spend the money on, how we're going to make investments in economic development. In order to encourage additional economic development and growth of the commercial tax base in the town center. And so as I said, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but we talked to a lot of stakeholders. To make sure that this list captured what folks wanted. Residents in town, businesses in town, people who are involved, employees who have been involved for a long time. And so you'll see duplicates on this list and that was on purpose, right? So the, the more times you see something show up on a list, the more likely the select board should be to consider whether to include it or not. And so what, what the select board, what I'd like to ask the select board to do is talk about these. You can go through them in order, but start pulling out what you as individual members and eventually as a collective board see as the priorities. What do you want to see that is on the list and near the top of the list? And what do you see on there that you might not want to include and, and discuss that? So. Happy to facilitate more, but if anybody wants to get started, by all means.
Similar to the. Capital request ranking, could you do something similar to that with this board? But this is, this, those priorities are going to change based on where development goes. What, what areas are ready to, you know. Best in and stuff, it's. It is going to be a fluid list.
And it doesn't have to be. It's the list changes over time. So what we said is a priority now doesn't necessarily mean what will be five years from now.
Should have some maybe general criteria as far as how we pray our tests. What's, what is our goal? I mean, going back to our, our values. Session.
I would suggest that we kind of think in terms, maybe in three sorts of, one is commercial development in this area. And then two is. Probably more public things like public safety. But could include other things. Well, and then the third would be kind of recreational activities. I think that's a large part of what we've been talking about, recreational facilities. We may want to consider commercial development in case some of these large developed projects or may require things like. Water and sewage before they go in, that would be the public input into. Private commercial well, for example.
And that was the biggest headline that came out of the, the meeting with the undeveloped property owners, water. So their limiting factor in how densely they can develop is their water capacity. And it doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't enough water, but they can't, they can't secure the water on their property alone. In order to. in order to develop the way that they might like to if they did have water capacity. And the state, independent of this conversation, the state actually reached out to John Hawkins and said, I'd like to come out and work with you to figure out how to connect these water systems. You know, we have the condo units going up, we have the Dove Development Group, you know, potentially 80 units. And so the that was a key headline from that meeting was an evaluation of water infrastructure. And that doesn't necessarily mean the town owning the water system. That could mean the town using, you know, funds to invest in the water system, using the tax dollars from those developments. So it's not a burden to the rest of the taxpayers. And then it it may, you know, remains private and it's still run, you know, privately and things like that, so.
Right, to be public, it seems we would be spending all money before we had all of that, you know, bonding it or something. I think we agree, we're not going there yet.
But we may, we may have to, we may want. These aren't necessarily things to be looking at today. Be
ears. But you know, still, if we're going to do the commercial area or the other buildings, we're going to have to have the developer share with some of these costs.
Yeah, random place to go.
And that's a, yeah, that's a common model.
Can't can't be enough like gift.
It precisely, and and it really shouldn't be. So sometimes you see a development agreement in conjunction with a TIF district where, let's say, for example, you have a developer that's building a commercial development and they are seeking planning board approval for, and they're required to have this much parking. But the, in order to support everything else that's going on in the town center, the town would benefit from, you know, 50 more spaces or 30 more parking spaces. And efficiently, it's it's in everybody's best interest to just add 30 spaces there. But the developer isn't required to, you know, add the 30 spaces because the town wants it. The town could enter a development agreement with the the developer and say, if you add those 30 spaces, we'll use TIF funds to pay to pay that back, essentially using the taxes that they're paying to go right back to the project and accomplish that objective. So there are plenty of opportunities for, you know, to work with the private sector. Because again, the headline here, this is an economic development tool. And so, you know, the commercial items in the categories Chairman Antrick mentioned, those are easy, it's obvious how those benefit economic development. But the public and recreation development is to further encourage economic development and support the businesses that we'd like to see in the town center, establish that broader commercial tax base.
Yeah, we're also going to, what we draw on the ground, the larger route, we're going to have to train people to control the testing of the monthly on the water that's being set up for the public and everybody else. That city is just don't want that to get out of here and get forgotten either.
So let's talk about one that showed up on a few of the lists, which was public or community space. So this was, you know, this came up as in the recreation area as indoor recreational space, community center from the planning board, public facilities, restrooms, community center, library. The select board talked about it as well. And so I think what I've heard through this process is that in establishing the town center zoning district and the zoning requirements for the town center, the residents of Barrington have envisioned some municipal building in the town center that supports, you know, the vision for that area. And most frequently, I've heard that as a community center or a community center library to support the cafes and restaurants and and other businesses that are being developed here. Now, the TIF district isn't going to build a community center or a library, but the TIF funds could be used to evaluate or do engineering studies in conjunction with other commercial developments to determine the suitability of a location for any, you know, what it specifically is, you know, I'm calling it the under the category of public facilities or community center, but that could take a lot of different shapes in in actuality. But it seemed to be that there's a lot of appetite for that. How does the select board feel? What does the select board envision for the town center and and the idea of having of a public building, you know, that has a library or programming space or indoor courts or anything like that?
Like a more centralized.
That would include that or wouldn't? Would include that.
Same with me, and I see themes of walkability and connectivity here. So and also just talking to people who are doing the master plan at voting day, people wanted to be able to walk or bike or somehow get to the center of town without driving. And they do have lots of trails, but we don't that yet.
Yep. Excellent point. Please, George. Oh, okay. So the for a public facility like that, I mean, it I it's easy to draft language that leaves the door open to allow the funds to be spent on, you know, like I said, the feasibility, engineering, et cetera of a facility like that. But something like that would take shape in likely in conjunction with, you know, one of these vacant piece of property and one of the development projects that would come forward. And so that's a conversation that will likely continue outside the conversation of of a TIF district. And like I said, I don't think that this TIF funding is going to be the, you know, the the golden dollar that solves the funding problem for anything like that. But it could at least get us started and, you know, could pay for a plan that voters could consider. So Joyce, please, Dan, go ahead.
I was going to suggest, we want to list, we consolidate these lists a little bit. Maybe five or six priorities that would encompass them all. So I would suggest perhaps in these space, our community space is one, hospital, outdoor, community space is another. Connectivity issues, either tails or trails. Your one.
Tails and tails, that was the summer reading program theme. I'm just kidding, you know? All right.
And I would just add that walkability and bikability.
Yeah, that's true, but they're also talking about road improvements and parking too, which is important.
Master plan surveys might shed some light too, as far as the citizens want. And the library survey as well, as far as publication of the library. And then maybe another section of utilities. Water, sewage, parking.
Where do sidewalks go? I'm surprised.
You could put solar energy in there too, because it would help to trace some of the costs.
Under solar, you mean? Joyce, I think that sidewalks come in under walkability. And because I think the what I heard from the public safety professionals is that we have trouble with the crossing of Route Nine, right? We don't even have a crosswalk. There isn't even, there isn't even a painted crosswalk on Route Nine right now.
We have excuse the interruption, but we're going to the state and the state has turned this down, so you know, that the if we had state approval, then we could do it, but state will give to us and she get crossed down nearby Kalus.
And I don't think that door slammed shut, right?
But it's still had a nail right down, I think that's something we need to get open.
Yeah, that's that's what this plan.
Yes, I understand.
And I think, you know, using a crosswalk as a perfect example. We go to the state and say, we want a crosswalk on Route Nine. They look and say, okay, it's going to cost $150,000 to have a blinking light there on that crosswalk, which you would need to have for a crosswalk. And the state says that's, we'll add it to our 10 year plan and that will be in year 10. But if the town is able to go to the state and say, we have funding, this is a priority for us, what we hear from the business owners is that we need it to be safe, well lit for, you know, the residents of Barrington, the people visiting our community to patronize businesses on both sides of Route Nine, then we could consider spending the money to on that infrastructure ourselves. And maybe that makes the conversation easier with the state. Our esteemed police chief wants a Skyway, a cross Route Nine.
And they do that down the building.
Yeah, so that's that's the type of Barrington he envisions, just in case anyone was curious. Okay, I like where you're headed with this, Dan, and with the the cat, the prioritized categories with with multiple items underneath them. Is there anything on these lists that the select board or any member looks at, shakes their head and says, you know, that's that's not the, it's not what I see in Barrington?
Do we need a commercial include place to get a coffee or something like that down in the area? You know, just just just.
That would be up to the free market to decide, right?
Yeah.
I think some of those shops that we're talking about, the joint commercial district, this and stuff would include downstairs ops, even coffee houses, coffee rooms.
Talk about that.
That's, that's why I don't think we we can be terribly specific, but we want to.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, you know. So we first put the first one up, which was just 10 feet. Come back with the planning board, they changed.
I'd say anything other than maybe seasonal speed tables. I wasn't sure why seasonal. Need to know more about that.
Speed bumps and speed tables are a pain to plow, yeah. I forget if it was the fire chief or police chief who suggested it and then said, no, I'm not going to say that because Mark will shoot me. And I said, well, what's to say seasonal?
I don't want to lose that public restaurants coming up a lot. And that would be excellent thing to have in the town center. And also I had to look up bicycle pump tracks. Those are awesome.
This Matt Moore, who you're considering to appoint to the Recreation Commission, is a huge advocate, as I understand, for for creating that opportunity in Barrington. You're thinking of Matt Mowers, who ran for federal representative.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Okay, how specific do you want us to be tonight?
What I'm hearing is that the the select board identifies with the items that occurred the most as the priorities as well. So things like water infrastructure, the indoor and outdoor recreational opportunities, walkability, and then the the other categories as well. The select board hasn't seen anything that they disagree with.
I'm sure you want sandboxes.
Okay.
The cats love sandboxes, cats plus most love sandboxes.
Well, there are lids you could put.
Yes, but they get big enough.
Wait, is this a thing? You shouldn't have community sandboxes?
No, 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 just any sandbox that have a lid on it. No cats and other welding.
Don't tell Lee, don't tell the town, they have a fantastic, open sandbox, no lid. With the toys in there, yeah, my kids love it. What's it called toxosmosis?
Toxoplasmosis.
Toxoplasmosis. Research.
Regular women aren't supposed to empty kitty litter.
Okay.
So if you have a cat.
No cats, no cats, further excuse not to have a cat. Sorry, Amanda, this toxosmosis. Okay, so we'll put a question mark next to sandboxes. So what I will do then is I will take and and create a draft of the development program. And the the development program in conjunction with the finance plan will identify specific projects and put a ballpark cost, you know, very, very preliminary, just to put pens to paper. A pen to paper. The development program, especially if we're leaving most of these things on there, will amount to millions of dollars. And I don't expect we'll have those funds you know, forever with this TIF district. But that's okay, because what our plan is, is to put things on the program that we may want to support economic development and give us the opportunity to spend funds towards that initiative as funds come into the TIF district. And so that will be an important point in communicating the idea of a TIF with residents and voters that go to the polls in March that just because it's on the list doesn't mean that the town is going to do all of these things. And it will be the responsibility of the select board in conjunction with the advisory committee in the TIF district to advise what steps are actually taken. And so I'll work to have that draft of the development program ready for the December 12th select board meeting. That was my goal, so that we can move that to the next step as well and present it at the public hearing, January 10.
I want to thank you for moving this along, this is an enormous amount of work that we're seeing done in a short period.
It's a team effort, yes, I appreciate that. It's a team effort and I think what is has really been a motivating factor is everybody really likes the idea and really sees the opportunity that it could provide to make specifically the town center Barrington into what people have envisioned for a long time. So it's exciting.
Are there opportunities for the developers and commercial interests to invest in these things as well? Does that then become a donation? How does that work if corporations want to up fund some of this?
They will in lots of cases, and they'll make the money on it, but that will increase their value and they will pay increased taxes. And that increase in the taxes from what it is now is what the TIF district is all about.
So, yeah, I think, no, I think that's absolutely right. So I think what Dan is saying is that the free market will likely encourage the type of commercial development of some of the things that you might see on this list. Are you asking, is there an opportunity to further encourage beyond the free market that to happen?
Encourage the developments to be invested in these things.
And I think that's where it gives us, so at the conference, it was actually a great opportunity to talk with colleagues from across the state who have administered TIF districts in their communities. And one of the most insightful conversations I had was with the city manager in Lebanon. And what he explained to me is that they use the TIF district in conjunction with development agreements to accomplish broader goals for the community other than just the TIF district. And so to your point, restrooms, you know, restrooms is maybe an example. So having a standalone restroom facility is a terrible idea. You got to maintain it, it's, you know, but if we have somebody building a property and we can work with them to develop two outside access restrooms with, you know, maintenance plan that, you know, we sharing the costs or or whatever, that's something that we can do with a development agreement. And we can use the TIF funds to support whatever commitment the town might make with the development agreement. And so, you know, it always, at the end of the day, it's always going to to cost some money. It's always going to take some incentive to accomplish the goals that we have. And the TIF district in creating that fund will give the select board more tools to accomplish the goals that it has. And it might be the planning board and the zoning ordinance or the town and the vision for the town center. And so I think that's how I would see incentivizing private development and private risk in accomplishing some of these tasks with saying, you know, Rob Gibson, developer, you come in and you'd like to, you know, pie in the sky, you'd like to develop this, but you, we're hearing that it might be too much risk for you. And so we tell you that if you're willing to do X, which is one of our priorities as well, then the first five years that you pay taxes on that will essentially take your taxes and pay it right back to you towards your bond, the risk that you took to make this development. Because what we're looking at is the project that you're talking about will add $5 million of value for the town, which after that five years will go straight to the tax rules. Will employ 50 people and all of that money will be reinvested in our community. And that's worth more to us than your first five years in taxes. And so the TIF district allows us to do that with the funds to fund the priorities that we have. But a development agreement would be that approach.
Well, the one thing there too is the water, water was as Joyce had mentioned earlier, is seems to be difficult situation for us to overcome at this time. And as you know, I've been pushing for years for a water committee. And as you know, I've been pushing for years for a water committee. And I would like the board to consider, not tonight, but to consider maybe having a water committee that can work with the TIF. And see if we can't get that to work, if that's not one of the priorities, or we go that way there because. That would sell it and it would make this work faster and better and. I think we'll have more, more of a chance of getting this passed than put through.
So the last topic on the TIF district that I wanted to cover was the advisory committee. So it was actually a recommendation, I I talked to the business or the property owners that own undeveloped property in the town center. And I said, you know, this needs to be, we need to have grassroots support for this. We need residents to understand what it is so they can make an informed decision. One of the recommendations that they made was forming the advisory committee ahead of time. As a way to, you know, refine what's in the TIF district, kind of like that, you know, the purpose of that meeting, that stakeholder meeting. And but also to help with the promotion and getting information out to residents and, you know, this advisory committee, they could go back to their circles and. And I didn't think it was a terrible idea, but I, you know, obviously that would be a select board decision. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but I wanted to see how you felt about it. We have to, we would have to have an advisory committee anyways. The advisory committee by statute needs to be made up of a prior, of a majority of property owners within the district or abutting the district. And so the other members would presumably be, you know, the town planner, town administrator, maybe a select board member.
Sellers?
There's no limits. It's up to the select board. I would cap it at seven.
I assume we'll be able to get more than enough people from, from the district itself, but we'd also want people from. Living outside the district, I think.
So one of the reasons I wanted to take the temperature now is because I intend to send a letter to the business owners. A broader category of business owners in the TIF district to give them an opportunity to ask questions or offer insight outside of that. One work session that we had. And so if the select board is interested, then I could include a note in that letter saying that we're also looking for applicants for the advisory committee. If you're interested, you know, here's to get more information. Saying heads nodding, so I'll include that and. Yeah, I wouldn't expect much movement on review, reviewing applicants until January probably, but. We can start down that process. So maybe a vote to support the items, the development program items as indicated and discussed. Support the development program items as included and discussed. So moved. Absolutely. I have nothing further.
Any unique zoning that gets established within this new district as opposed to, say, town centers are different? Is there any expectations like with planning board or zoning as far as what kind of developments and aesthetics and all the different things that are occurring?
Not automatically. But I think just as we used the town center and village zoning district as a baseline to develop the district. I think so too, the the planning board could look at future zoning amendments to consider additional zoning changes. Within the district to further support the goals. So, you know, it's obviously just a tool. One thing that, on the topic of water, for example, the, what the gentleman from the state DES had said is. I I could help you draft zoning amendments to build in requirements in your zoning ordinance to tie water systems together. To take a more systems level view of of the water system. And so it could be that the planning board looks at, you know, a zoning amendment in the future. Which supports the goal of water infrastructure within the TIF district, but maybe it's not specifically bound by the same TIF district, but it's, you know. Taking a multifaceted approach to solving the goals and priorities we have. TIF is one facet, zoning ordinance is another facet, et cetera. But it's, yeah, it's a good point.
Playing work already, making, proposing a couple of zoning changes with different.
I just said to Joyce about considering getting the zoning, but you know, if we don't get it out now. It'll be next year. It's a way to subcut for the zoning board that's not part of the zoning in the town, they, you know. You say, well, you're going to approve it or not, you're almost handcuffing the US CBA to do things. So I think if you, if you could get with the chair of the. Planning and go that way there or. You know, get that there, get that information so they can look at it, see if there's anything else they need. So we can go along with makes this tip a lot smoother instead of having to go before the CBA and play that game.
Have you identified anything, you or Vanessa, that would need to be changed in zoning right away?
No, no, what I would say is that. You know, I think the the purpose of the zoning board, as you know, I'm not, I'm not saying this too, but I'm saying this in general. The purpose of the zoning board is that you can't write rules that apply in all situations. And the. You know, just because a project might need to seek a variance in order to accomplish the goals that they have. Doesn't mean that the project isn't fitting in the intended zoning ordner, ordinance or the intended, and that's obviously the role of the zoning board. So if the zoning board sees an application that says, oh, actually, this is a really good fit for what we're looking at it. You know, doesn't diminish values and, you know, the, you know, there's a hardship, whatever, you know, the the criteria the zoning board looks at. And the zoning board has the authority to say, you know, that is okay. If there were individual project ideas that would require a variance. I wouldn't necessarily say that the solution is to change the zoning ordinance as a whole. Opposed to allowing the applicant to seek relief from the zoning board for a specific use case.
Back in October 13th, we started talking about the gas station downtown and the. Burger King and that whole area down there. And look at the years that dragged on, and it dragged on substantially because there were some things in the zoning. That made it so difficult to do it, and the decision the zoning board made in October 13th just. You know, their hands were tied.
Right, so what else? Yeah, so what else?
So that, so that's why I'm just saying now is that maybe we could look at some of the changes that are recommended and have the planning board. When you go to look at it and say, do we want to do this? No, I'm not saying here for us to do a rewrite of the zoning.
No, I understand. So the planning board has seen, there was a presentation about the TIF district to the, to the planning board, they discussed it in earnest, made recommendations. And I suspect the conversations will continue.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, so this is the result of the process the technology committee has been going through. In order to encourage additional fiber development in Barrington to bring fiber to the home. So highlights are, we don't have, we're not able to secure funding or bonding sources. That are currently available based on how served Barrington is. We're not unserved or underserved. And so at some point, we expect that criteria to change where we might be eligible. But what the, what the technology committee recommended is taking the proposal that they favored. Which was from Consolidated Communications, and they are Phidion Fiber. And suggesting a non-binding agreement to work cooperatively. Towards any future fiber expansion in Barrington. So, and this would be a warrant article that would memorialize that agreement. Let residents know that the select board and technology committee has been working literally all year. Towards this goal, and it would also put us in an advantageous position. If and when new funding opportunities or proposals became available, that we have already developed a partnership. With Consolidated, which is what is proposed, so that we can work together to bring a project forward. And save time from the the lag that often exists in going out to bid. We already did a competitive process with a request for proposals. Technology committee reviewed all the criteria, scored it, selected Consolidated. So looking for the select board to support the recommendation of the technology committee to include an article on the warrant. Which would would ratify a non-binding agreement with Consolidated Communication with the goal of bringing fiber to the home in Barrington.
This doesn't have.
No cost.
Going to go for that piece on doing a certain percentage of individuals, Bill?
No.
Okay.
So at some point in the future, we'd love to ask voters to to support some project. Which, which, you know, would have a cost component. Because we continue to hear from residents that we want competition, we want additional providers in town. And what we hear from providers is it, the, there aren't enough subscribers in Barrington to justify the competition when you have 48 square miles. And so what you see is the free market, like Phidion Fiber. They are available to 400 some odd households in Barrington, and that's along the Route 4 corridor. And in in the free market, they, Phidion Fiber developed that fiber corridor. And they reached out as far as they could, because that's what's good for them. They won't touch all of the rest, they don't have immediate plans to touch any of the rest of Barrington without some level of support. And so that would be a decision for voters to make at some point in the future. That isn't this decision. But this puts us in an advantageous position. So if if there are grants, which that's been a real hot topic at the federal government, is making money available for broadband infrastructure. And so if and when that money is available to us, we'd like to be able to secure it, we'd like to be able to jump on it. And having this agreement and partnership would allow us to do that.
So doing anything to text the provisional fees?
No financial component, zero.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Earlier, watching the warrant articles that were reviewed by the ABC. Who has the current master list of warrant article ideas?
I do. Would you like it?
Yeah.
Okay. It'll be in the TA report for next week's meeting. So I'll, I'll include it in in that.
Money ones are in 2023.
Yeah, so all the money ones, most of the money ones, what you don't see in that chapter is the Richardson Pond article. Or the Public Safety Building Design Engineering article, the things that have come up throughout the process, the Energy Committee article. And so, yes, the, in the materials for the next meeting will be the first draft of the warrant articles.
Now, Richardson, Dan. We talked about this before.
Okay, so yes, the reason I included this was mostly because of the planning board conversation. And so. Joyce, I don't know if you want to give a, an introduction on what you heard and some of the questions that came up, and I'll answer questions.
So the planning board, looking at the capital improvement projects, looked at the conservation committees and the Richardson Dam. And there was some strong voices on planning boards that there should be no town monies spent on the Richardson Dam and it should be a conservation. Commission monies. My response to that is, well, that's where we've been for a number of years and we haven't been able to solve it. So we should just solve the problem with the Richardson Dam and and move on with funding it. So then the conversation turned to how come we're going to fix the dam, removing the dam lessons to be the trend. And that sort of was our rabbit hole, trying to get what exactly happened. So at the planning board, someone said, oh, I know it's because it was in the deed. And so I talked to conservation and I talked to Connor, always got slightly different answers. I mean, I don't actually have any strong feelings one way or the other about whether the dam stays, but I really want to. I got grilled by a resident and I didn't know the answer to almost any of this. So Connor found out that it's not in the deed. When Mary Richardson deeded this, and I think there was a title search, so you were able to look at the previous one, there's nothing, there's no restrictions in the deed. Then I was told it was a cell easement issue that they had said that DM should stay. But then Connor said, really, they put that in there because they thought that's what the Barrington residents wanted.
Yes and no. So, so they sell, holds a conservation easement, so we couldn't, we wouldn't just be able to remove the dam because they are a stakeholder, they are an interest holder. And when we asked them about removal of the dam, they didn't say no. But what they said is that they would want to see the results of a comprehensive ecological study to better understand the impacts. And the Conservation Commission at the same stakeholder meeting said, well, we'd want to know that too. You know, we wouldn't want to, they, they wouldn't support removal of the dam if it would make the, if it would have a net negative impact on the ecology. Obviously, there are some benefits to, you know, returning things to the natural state. But yeah, so it wasn't, there was no definitive answer. They were open to consider it, but they basically gave their list of demands, what they, what they would need to see. And it didn't sound like they would pay for it, right? You know, we would, we would pay for that.
Conservation Commission said they had, originally, some of their members had very strong views that they should remove the dam. But then it seemed like over time because of the cost issues that they're supporting the reconstruction of the dam.
And so I included in, in my report, the only note about removal of the dam from the engineering consultant's assessment report. And this is what he had iterated at the stakeholder meeting, which is that the, the cost of removing the dam might be similar to reconstruction. Permitting is a lot more, you know, removal would likely be a little bit more than reconstruction cost wise. And the benefit would be a reduction in long-term liability or maintenance costs. So what the stakeholders said was, but if we're reconstructing the dam so that it's non-jurisdictional. Then our ongoing maintenance and responsibilities are are reduced anyways. And so this is another way to reduce our ongoing maintenance and liability while maintaining the pond where it is. And so it was the stakeholders who made the recommendation to opt for reconstruction, not removal. Ultimately, I mean, I say, it's, this is a situation where it's not the, solely the select board's decision. The, the select board is is responsible for the decision-making as, because the town owns the property. But because there's a conservation easement on it, the cell would have to agree to any policy direction of the select board. Because of the, the permitting required, I don't think DES would say no. But as indicated by the engineering consultant, it would require permitting to make sure that the state was satisfied. And so if the select board wanted to change the policy direction and start heading down the path of further evaluating dam removal, we could. But that's the background from, you know, why we have been focusing on reconstruction versus removal.
I have a question. When the engineers said that would be almost as expensive or more so to remove the dam, were they also calculating the price of building some kind of walkway?
No.
They were not.
No.
The public would need access.
You still need some sort of bridge to for vehicles to get in, so.
Vehicles coming the other way from Smoot, not Smoot.
Ross Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I heard is that the, the trail system as it exists now would be pretty fruitless to get to the. What would be the north side of that property from the Ross Road side. It's many hundreds of acres.
Another thing is too is that if you walk there and you go in, in when you can see all the wildlife that's in there. And that would suffer from the drainage and everything else that's all around, but you know, it's just, it's just my opinion because I've walked up through there. And you know, it's just, it would be a shame to, to drive, follow that land.
Be a diagram of the nature of the cars.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but then, then you'd be calling, you'd be calling Mark to come down and move it. Yeah, but then then you'd be called, you'd be calling Mark to come down and move it once a month, you know.
So I really think there's two things that the select board should give some direction on here. The first is relative to reconstruction or removal. If if the select board is would, you know, right now, the policy direction is reconstruction. We have the engineering consultant working on the design plans for reconstruction. If the select board, based on comments from residents and or the planning board. Or or certain planning board members is interested in reevaluating that policy direction, you know, speak up now. That would be the first order of business.
We'd like to see it reconstructed.
Is it keep the dam?
Yes.
Interested in just in kind of a general sense of removing dams. What the ecological impact of removing that dam.
Do you have any sense of cost?
An ecological study? No, but I could certainly, I could certainly get one.
Yeah.
Mostly I wanted numbers to be able to say to people, it costs this much to keep it, it'll cost this much to to remove it. Some clear data.
Seems to me having a part. On trails, it has an aesthetic, but it also has habitat to me, but I mean. You'd lose a lot of habitat, I would think, birds and other animals that are. Like associated with ponds.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah. What was there before the dam, how long, how long was the dam, do you know?
Seventies.
Was that the first time there was a dam?
No, that's.
Don't run that long ago.
I appreciate.
Yeah.
I think I think that's I think that's pretty old personally. Okay, so would you, are you interested in me getting a proposal for an ecological study of dam removal for Richardson Pond? Would you like to ask the conservation commission to weigh in?
Yes, for me, I would say yes.
Okay. So what this mean, so the the second, the second point. Of this topic is the funding in the warrant article. Because as we talked about earlier, the planning board has already had a spirited conversation about how this project, whether it's removal or reconstruction, should be funded. The budget committee is going to have that same conversation tomorrow night as they look at. One point four million dollars worth of warrant article requests. And. This regardless of what we do, it's going to cost money. And, you know, we need to be thinking about how we're going to ask voters to pay for it. George, you know, some you had mentioned earlier about taxpayer money versus the conservation money. Truth be told, it's all taxpayer money, right? So as, yeah, as a resident town of Barrington, I'm.
Stressing contribute.
More, of course. I look at the conservation fund, I mean, a dollar is a dollar. And so the the select board is going to need to decide. If it's three hundred thousand dollars, where that three hundred thousand dollars comes comes from, regardless of if it's reconstruction or removal. And I don't think that it doesn't sound like that's going to be an easy decision or and it doesn't sound like that's going to be a decision that. There's going to be a majority of support. Either way, it sounds like there's a lot of people with strong voices on either side. So I have some action items for the decision between reconstruction or removal. What what do you need to know? When it comes to the funding source and how you're. Planning to bring a warrant article to voters to fund reconstruction or removal.
You know, in in years past, we've had the conversation with the Conservation Committee and and they have. Agreed in in past committee to use some of their money that they get from the town. To turn around and use it to repair part of the dam. And I don't have, and I'm talking off the cuff now because I don't know what the money is, but I know that. There was an agreement set up between them and the select board back that to who's and how it was going to be paid for. And that was my understanding because now that's coming out again. Turn around and remove the dam or impact replace the dam, you know, it's it's. It seems like it's redundant, so I I don't know what those figures are. I know that, you know, that there was a lot of people older than me involved in it, but that's all I can say.
So the Conservation Committee.
Yeah, yeah.
The Conservation Commission put in fifty thousand towards the.
Yeah. Yeah. And they had something else to.
So I think I think their point is that they can't. Fit the whole bill, so.
So the question is, could they add some additional? Could they come with some additional money and untuck the fifty?
I think so.
So what the Danin and myself and the Conservation Commission Chair met a couple of months ago, we gave you a report on it after the meeting that we had. And and maybe this is what you're thinking of, Mr. Bailey, so. What the Conservation Commission Chair had said is that he felt like the Conservation Commission. Would be in a position and would be willing to consider funding, say, a hundred thousand dollars of the dam reconstruction. And, you know, at that time, we were thinking it would be a three hundred thousand dollar project. And we had talked about, well, the two hundred thousand dollars could be a warrant article. You know, asking voters on the tax rate to pay for the other component. And so that was just that, just an idea, but we had briefed the select board on that, so maybe that's what you're thinking of. And that would be in addition to the fifty thousand.
At what point, when looking at the warrant articles, would we have a chance to maybe talk about ARPA funds? Like which proportion of ARPA funds could be applied or not applied? Yeah, one could say for the dam, you know, a hundred thousand from Conservation Commission, a hundred thousand from ARPA funds, and then a hundred thousand on the article. Or if you break it down that way, we do, you know, some of the priorities for the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so I think I think that's a really good point, and I think one of the things the budget committee intends to talk about tomorrow, at their meeting tomorrow. Is what costs could be deferred, maybe not deferred for a full year, but deferred to a point where ARPA funds could be used to fund a a portion of it. For, you know, whatever the situation may be. And at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to use the ARPA funds until we get the one point five million dollars from the federal government. And so, you know, that is is similarly encumbered, I guess, timeline wise, but. So to your point of when can we consider, you know, I I think what you could consider is this is something that we could defer. And, you know, make a list of ARPA funding priorities so that, okay, we're not going to ask voters for this. But we're going to consider this in the first slot for the ARPA funds.
The ARPA funds aren't in hand, no.
No, they are, but what the the select board, the decision select board made in made in February was to. Use the ARPA funds to reduce the amount that needed to be bonded and bond for the difference. And so the the grant will. Cover, you know, all of the the cash.
On what's right on.
Right.
How much pressure is the state putting on us to move on this project?
That's an excellent question and. Not much. So it's a low hazard dam. We have, the town has dragged its feet for far too long, in my opinion. But if you ask the federal government, it's probably, you know, lightning speed.
I like that.
Yeah, I I expect that we could ask the state if it would be possible to defer this project. From a twenty twenty three project to a twenty twenty four project. And I I think it's reasonable to consider that they would be acceptable to that.
It's good to know, I think voters need to know that too.
They've put, at some point, they're gonna get tired of different flavors. Think about that.
Although we're probably looking at a, at least a biosafety building for two thousand and twenty four. That's a big ticket.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the Conservation Commission to talk about the topic of reconstruction versus removal. And I'm going to get a preliminary number for an ecological study. At a level of detail which would satisfy CELT in being able to make a determination about reconstruction or removal. Timing wise, we don't have a lot of time, we have to finalize warrant articles, we're holding a public hearing on them on January tenth. And so. It could be that if this remains a pending item, we don't really have much of a choice other than to to delay, to to push this off. So maybe as an additional action item, I'll start the conversation with the state now to see.
We have a meeting next week in two big galleries.
I don't, I guess, the Conservation Commission meets the second Thursday. Which is. After our last meeting.
We have one, we have one meeting in December, right?
Two.
Two.
They they meet the fifteenth, which is after our second meeting in December, so. Okay, so. I will keep you all posted, additional items on the Richardson Pond Dam. Questions, comments, concerns?
No difference. I very much.
I will ask, I have a chance to speak before we start. What I did is I had the opportunity to do some further reading and what have you and. I read what was put out and everything else and. I would ask the board to consider my motion to remove that from our discussion and move forward with the next one. So I had the opportunity to see that it would be a detriment to the town rather than something that would work out well. That further educated myself to see.
Anyone else wanting to discuss this?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Energy capital is everything.
Rob, do you want to speak to this one, you want to give an introduction?
Sure, sure. But energy meetings met a couple of times so far and that's really, really good questions and with a lot of expertise on the committee, a lot of good ideas. And so in order to make some of these things actionable and to. You know, fund some of these ideas, they're hoping to create a a capital reserve for our energy efficiency. At the minimum, the amount we need to start on is ten thousand dollars. And this could go towards conducting energy audits specifically targeted first at the current library building. Which has been recognized as usually in energy inefficient and having a lot of opportunity to. Save the town a lot of, the taxpayers a lot of money on energy costs. And so the energy committee is looking to have a warrant article to establish a capital reserve, start funding some of these ideas, investigations.
You should just.
I I am definitely in support of it and it's a relatively small amount, but I think it could go a long ways in saving money for the town.
It opens the door for later.
It gets the ball rolling as far as the momentum that I'm excited to see in in the committee.
That's great, yeah, I know the rec department last year, they threw out an entire tank of oil that was intended for something during the cold spring. Yeah, it's a lot of work.
And one of the energy committee members met with a consultant out at that building. Last week to get an idea of what an energy audit would cost. And he shared that the the this consultant shared that the community, community development block grant. Has seventy five percent match grant funds available for energy audits up to six thousand dollars. I think the six thousand dollars is their share. And so it's possible that if we could avail ourselves to that grant funding opportunity, the town's cost could be very low. And the energy committee is going to meet on that this Thursday or meet this Thursday and discuss that. And so it could be that the request could be less than ten thousand dollars even. And the energy committee, speaking to the momentum that select person Gibson mentioned, mentioned. The getting it in front of the voters to let them know that there's an energy committee that's established that is interested in pursuing these initiatives. And and working on this is an important goal for the committee because outreach is going to be really important. So they'd like to have a warrant article, knowing that there's a lot of requests, I think the amount can be small. But it allows voters to to see that and and allows us to hear from voters that that they like this idea as well.
Great, that's moving along such a way.
I think the town backs. I think it's not a bad number for twice that even.
So we need a motion?
Yeah, if you're interested in supporting that, it'll be on the list that you see next week.
Big question.
Yeah.
To add a warrant article to establish a capital reserve fund for energy efficiency. In the sum of ten thousand dollars. Or less. Or ten thousand to be applied towards the energy audits and it can be open ended. If it stretches further, then you can do more buildings.
I said.
If we do that, though, won't we collect ten thousand dollars anyway?
I think that's what I heard, I I think what I heard is even if we can get a grant, ten thousand dollars is a good number to start with and that would allow for more. Yep.
Takes care of the overruns.
Any other discussion? On David? And very good. What board member reports some concerns, Scotty Allen?
Zoning ordinances that are going to be coming before the town, I think. I talked about those, the one Oak Hill moving those lots to general. From general residents to regional commercial. With the ones that Bunkford Road. They have a series of amendments that are zoning changes that are editing some of the zoning ordinance that did not pass last time. So clarifying that home occupations must be conducted entirely within the structure of a single family dwelling and may only employ one non-resident. So that would be the amendment. The second one is to alter the area of the dwelling unit that home occupation may occupy from thirty percent of the dwellings net living area to a maximum of five hundred square feet. Describing that differently. And that in a home business, the accessory building. This is complicated. It is confined to a designated accessory of primary dwelling structure or an outside area, which is adequately screened with fencing or vintage data buffer. And further to reduce the amount of total area which the home business may occupy from forty five hundred square feet to two thousand square feet. Or no more than ten percent of the lot, which if ever is any less. One more definitions for attached buildings would read. Currently reads one or more walls in common with adjoining buildings, it would now be amended to read connected by a common roof. And the ordinances on signage, I described at a previous select board meeting, those have not gone to legal yet. Although we did edit some of the language based on reviewing the Reed versus Gilbert decision.
The common roof?
Yeah, we changed the wording from sharing one wall to a common roof.
So what happens if you have a two story house and you only put the other one at one story, that's not a common roof then? Does it, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to discuss that, that's how I would see that. That one came up, that's where you do those.
And I think everything else we discussed already, the Richardson Dam, the Lakeside Oak Culvert, they had a extensive discussion about. A way around not redoing the culvert, although I had a conversation with Connor around that. And he said the stakeholders had reviewed that option of extending Class Six Road to go to Peabody Way. And went with the upgrading the culvert. That's the more valid.
For the owner occupied businesses, only having one non-resident, non-occupant employee. How does that affect like farms or businesses that go up like landscaping companies that want to have employees that are in the fields? Not on site, but there are employees of that business.
I think this is talking about having the employee working under.
I think that's the intent, but does that does like lock us into anything because to protect like agriculture farms are going to may have multiple workers and. Seasonal. Yeah, seasonal workers and things like that.
I'll take that back. I don't have the full wording. In the the. The formal wording is that it's in the the home business. In the structure. I'm guessing that's different. Right, so you're administering something, but people aren't working there at that.
Anything else?
They also had a discussion about the library from the capital improvement. Warren felt that five point two five million was too high. I said, I thought that was a placeholder because the library had appeared before us the night before. It was why we bought meeting with an architect and reviewing sites. So that. That's how I took that. I think that's it.
Thursday, November seventeenth, the Conservation Commission met. They were reviewing some of the planning board cases that. We went back and forth between the two. And it was a very short meeting because following that, we had the energy committee meeting and some of the members were on both. So. And after that, the energy committee met. That before it's going really well, excited about the the members and what they're all bringing. They're discussing discussing things like key power, municipal solar installations. They're looking to kind of educate people in town by having guest speakers come to the meetings and present publicly. People like. Those who run the Durham Energy Committee, which has been around for a long time and have a lot of experience. They've got to reinvent the wheel. So they're looking to have people come in and educate us and citizens on. Energy efficiencies. And then again, the capital reserves. Warrant article. And then. I read that the nineteenth, the town lands committee met, they discussed the results of the auction. Discussed some more about the very town forests, potential. In that and then looking at the property behind the highway department. And if they're going to do stewardship plan for that land. And we did talk to the town's committee too about. Having on their radar suitable sites for solar arrays and things like that, the energy committee would be interested in.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a meeting with the library. It went well. They had a few discussions on. The search committee and what have you. Unfortunately. They didn't have the right individual, so that's. Thank you.
Energy committee or not, the energy committee, the transportation committee met earlier today. Mr. Loschdel is there and discussed recycling and always end of those recycling. Fortunately, have a chance to discuss the contract separate issue. The other part of the discussion about the ABC suggestion of recovering something like seventy-five percent of the. Expenses through revenue. So we talked about increasing bag prices. Probably to get in charge for metal because of the loss of metal for last few months. Did the holiday schedule, which we voted on agenda. Senate agenda, talked at some length about composting, recurring the issue. Continued discussions next meetings in ninth of January. The advisor budget heading up yesterday, last Tuesday, maybe again tomorrow. Previously, school board had a. Budget workshop on the fifteenth.
Dan, in question about that.
Yeah.
Have you seen, I know you reported on the projected increase, but have you seen any of the school budget materials available? I checked on the website and in their meeting materials, but I couldn't find anything.
No, and I don't know. I certainly probably had some of the budget. Workshop we did.
It wasn't in the packet for it. Just curious.
I didn't get a packet for it either.
Okay.
Okay, the second. On to the second public comment. Again, only fifteen minutes. Each person has three minutes. Visitors should address comments the chair of the select board is body and not for any individual member. Speaker shall provide a single opportunity for comment within three minutes. Public comment should be limited to fifteen minutes. Visitors should not expect response to their comments or questions since select board may not have discussed or taken position on their public comment. It's not a two-way dialogue. Speakers, select board, and or the town administrator. Is anyone here who would like to speak? Mister Walker.
Back in the early two thousands, the Conservation Commission approached Mrs. Goodman. Oh, purchasing that property offer. And consistent with what they used to do back then, since they had the property appraised and made her a full value law. Property with a dam there. Didn't negotiate, made her full value law. Considered more than what she would have sought, she had offered to sell that to the town because. I went to the meeting and spoke. Oh, I expressed my displeasure to the town bottoms above the fact that we spent a lot of money maintaining those ways like damn. And that this was another dam to build. But I was, what we, the town was met with on the night that selectmen voted. To. Purchase this piece of property was anybody in the state that answered that anything to do with dams. Were standing there, engineers and everything and saying that I was out of my mind that that was a whole impact dam, which it is. But it was going to be a relatively low. Cost to the taxpayers. And here we are, twenty years later. We get the amount of money that we spent maintaining that dam over the last twenty years. But now now we're being faced with a three to four hundred thousand dollar expense to maintain a dam. That I that was whole. Nothing to talk about. So you know what, it's it's over with. There's nobody on the Conservation Commission was there back then. But out of my frustration with the Conservation Commission, this. Over the years, we had a one act, we gave them a couple of dollars, we purchased property. They spent every bit of that purchasing property. We bought all the property, this town. But they haven't really done anything to pay their end of maintaining this stuff. You know, and it's that that's just to me as a taxpayer, it's frustrating from that. We acquired all this stuff, we put trails in, we get bands and get all this stuff, we're going to do, we don't have any funding. So you know what, it's going to go before the voters, but I just want you folks to hear. That that's very frustrating to me that. And I reached, Slough and Bailey was on the board back then. But the board's left and the voting can handle. This is what that and here we are. Again, twenty plus years later. We're going to spend three, four hundred thousand dollars for things.
Steve Walker, while you're there, could you just suggest the fireworks?
Sure. One one more positive. Committee is that. But fireworks display behind the, on the hill behind the Christmas town in around seven thirty. I think I'm going to get some, finish up paperwork tomorrow, but. The, there'll be a show of ten minute fireworks displayed at kind of the bank and bar for celebration and. We've had so much fun in the last three or four years that now we're looking at how we can do something once again. But anyways, fireworks, right?
When is it? This Friday.
Yes, there is. I'm I'm not really into being involved in this, all right? I was able to give a, we quoted on the on the Tri-Centennial Facebook page. They copied the flyer, but usually they do have. So I know we can say. But the course.
Just different vendors and stuff, but this year, George Canis is also catering. At the Christmas, starting at five thirty, we also buy his last. There's usually other vendors.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Anyone else here, you're online and might speak, please push the raised hand on your device for teams. You're on telephone star six. When recognized, remove yourself from mute. We'll be happy to hear your comments.
I see anything online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you there. In case, we'll close the public comment section. In motion for non-public session.
Motion for non-public for personnel.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending. Team.
Open session in a minute, in a second or two.
Yes, we are.
Okay, welcome back to public session, the public session of the parenting the town select board meeting of 28 November. How about the motion to seal these discussions for, what was it, six months, I believe?
I think that's reasonable.
Second. Home favor.